Here, I have an echo. Everybody's an echo to me. But I'm here.
Commissioner Hurdak?
Here.
You're muted, Commissioner Partas.
I have to, okay, I'm here.
Commissioner, question?
Here, Commissioner Grasky, I'm still, we're still being reheard right now.
Yes, everybody's.
There's still an echo. Okay, we're trying to work on that. Those of you online tonight, our apologies. We'd like to have, before we have this called in silence, I would like to ask everyone, please keep the family, Mr. Al, your thoughts on history years, a long time, and after Beach President, over, Rachel's wife, for 35 years, and they've resigned here in Deerfield for all this time, volunteer, senior boards here at the City of Deerfield Beach, an absolute man, wonderful person, and a tremendous loss from the community, so please, let them hear our family and their thoughts. We'll have a moment of silence and our pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Does this help at all?
Yes.
Do you hear the echo still?
No.
Okay, you don't hear the echo anymore?
No.
Okay, great, perfect. If we're looking for approval of the city commission meeting, the special city commission meeting, minutes of March 18th, 2021, will you go through?
Second.
Commissioner Preston, second by it, Commissioner Hurdak, excuse me, Vice Mayor Preston, second by Commissioner Hurdak, all pay or say aye?
Aye.
Okay, announcement of our city board meeting minutes, cultural committee meeting minutes for September 21st, October 19th, November 16th, December 21st of 2020, January 11th, and February 8th of 2021, firefighters pension fund board meeting minutes, September 14th of 2020, October 26th of 2020, the code compliance meeting minutes, January 27th, 2021, planning and zoning board meeting minutes, January 7th, 2021, and the community appearance board meeting minutes of January 13th and January 27th, 2021.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion, Mike, Commissioner Partas, second by Commissioner Hurdak, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's honestly, approval of Virginia for April 20, 2021, will you go through?
Second.
Motion by the Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Hurdak, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Remember something we covered publicly, wishing to provide comments, sharing advice, number three minutes, we can come out and call over one additional minute in print on your address. Anyone connected online, please, must cover the mask at the bottom of the computer screen and click the "Please Send" tab. Then on the right side, a button, "March Raise Hand," will appear. Once you click that button, you will be recognized by your profile and your email. For anyone participating, your mobile device or landline, simply dial star nine to raise your hand. You will be recognized by the last three digits of your phone number, and dial, and then dial six star six to be unmuted at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So I have a presentation by Mr. Joe Scott, Supervisor of Elections, during the high school voter registration drive. Mr. Scott, I see you're online.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all so much for giving me an opportunity to come and speak to you all tonight. The reason I'm here is to talk about the high school voter registration drive, which actually starts tomorrow, April 21st, and runs through April 30th. Now, the purpose for this program is to go ahead and get our kids active and civically engaged at a young age. They will not be able to vote until they turn 18, but if they are eligible voters, if they are US citizens, they can go ahead and get themselves registered at the age of 16, so that they're ready to go the first election after they turn 18. So we've been working very closely with the Broward County Public Schools, as, and this is actually an annual event, so this has been something that's been going on for years, but this year's a little bit unique, as we all know, and many of the students are still at home, and also, we're finding that more and more students every year have not gone to the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles, and they don't have a digital signature on file, so we actually will need them to print off their applications and mail it in, which is something that we are usually able to facilitate a little bit easier when the kids are actually in school. Since we're trying to get the same turnout and the same results that we normally get in a normal year, despite COVID, we're making the extra effort to get out into the community and speak with important community organizations, as well as city officials and public officials such as yourself, to get the word out to the community. And what I'm here to ask for is to ask for your help in using whatever resources the city has to communicate with the public, be it your website, your social media, any digital signage you may have around the city, to help us get the word out. We, we shared some materials, and we'd love it if I could have your help with getting the word out to the Deerfield Beach community, so that we can make sure that your young people are active and engaged in this program over the next week and a half, and get themselves registered to vote.
Excellent, Mr. Scott, thank you. We'll do what we can to assist you. It's a great program. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Scott, along with your efforts in getting these young people ready to vote, it's a very important process, recall, can there be an attachment to that, or a component of that, to begin to urge these young people to come to city commission meetings, to get involved early, to see how government run for them, probably, you know, make an easy, not only for them to vote, but for them to be involved in some more?
Yeah, you know what, absolutely. I will take that note back with me. I actually have a call set up here in the next couple of days with the, with Dr. Ball, who is the head of the Social Studies, the group of social studies teachers that we're working with for the, to make this, to pull off this voter registration drive, and I'll, and I'll definitely take that comment back to her and let her know that, you know, that you all are, would be interested in having students come out and learn more about city government.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Grasky?
Thank you, Mayor.
You've gone silent, there you go.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, now I want to thank Supervisor Scott for taking his evening to speak to us about this worthwhile initiative. Since I've been elected for four-plus years now, I can't remember a supervisor of elections coming before the commission, so I want to thank you for, for doing that, and applaud you, and ask you to keep that dialogue up in the, in the future, so I want to commend you for that. I'm also going to inadvertently put you on the hot seat tonight, because it's just strange, awkward timing, I guess. I got an email today from a fellow elected official in Broward County, talking about, I guess, increased fees for the cities with respect to municipal elections. Is that something, since, since we have you live, that you can get into and editorialize tonight? Because this was the first I had heard about it prior to the email I got literally a couple hours ago.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I, I'm not surprised that you all have not heard about it, the main reason being that Deerfield Beach actually has their elections in March, if I'm not mistaken, because I believe you all just had an election this past March, and the changes that are taking place do not impact cities that have their elections in March. You all may not be aware, but you all pay significantly more to have your elections in March than cities who have their elections in November. And it doesn't necessarily seem to be a logical mathematical reason for that. There's a good reason to have elections, your city elections in November, to increase, you get an increase in voter turnout if you have your elections in November. You would have 14 days of early voting, 12 hours a day, but it, there is a layer of complexity that is added when we're having these larger elections, these county-wide elections, but at the same time, we need to administer the city-level elections at the same time. There was this belief in the past that you're creating these efficiencies that should drive down costs, but that cost savings was never realized. And I may be the first supervisor who's ever come in and actually looked at it and done the math, and seen that there's actually value for the organization in having elections that take place in March, and there's actually an increase in costs when they moved in November. So while there's a good reason, there's a really good reason for cities to move their elections to November, that reason is not to save money, because the cost savings is unlikely to be realized. And for that reason, I think that as we look at how we allocate costs in the future, that it should be allocated more equitably, where cities who have their elections in March, as well as cities who have their elections in November, should pay roughly the same amount, and it should be a fee that's based on population, and also a fee based on the number of pages that your ballot takes up. And, and that is how we intend to build city elections moving forward. So I think this might be the first time I've been asked about it at a city that does a November election, but I'm, you know, more than happy to talk about it with anybody who wants to talk about it, because I'm certain that what I'm doing is the right thing.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, will put, Commissioner Grasky, any further questions?
No, the only other question is, did the March election cities, do their bills go down?
They will, they will. Now, the estimate that I, the initial estimate that was put out should be roughly the same as it was in the past, but there will be a revised estimate, and the revised estimate is going to bring the cost down for everyone. The revised estimate is going to be, is probably going to come out after I've had all of the meetings and budget workshops with the county, and once I've finalized my budget with the county, and then I'll be able to come back and kind of give a, what'll be a revised estimate. The final bill is the bill that will come out after the election takes place, but once I sort of have to buy in from the county commissions, and I've already had a chance to talk with a number of the commissioners, and I've had some mixed reactions to the plan, but, but overall, I think it's the right thing to do, but we, there shouldn't be a financial incentive to move to November, and right now, it seems like that's the way it's been in the past, and it won't be that way in the future.
I don't have any more questions, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the question, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Partas?
Joe Scott, how are you?
I am fantastic, Commissioner Partas, how about yourself?
Good, I, I really want to thank you for, you're the first, in, as long as I can remember, Commissioner, that at five minutes after seven on election night, you had the mail-in ballots totaled already, and within 20 minutes after that, the entire election was counted and over. That is fantastic. I'm sure you know who Fred Bellis is. Fred called me to say, never in the years that he had been there, had it ever been done as quickly and efficiently as since you've taken over, so I want to compliment you on your efforts.
Commissioner, I appreciate that. I wish I could take credit. When that took place, I was working at a polling place in Miramar. I spent my first election bouncing around, I believe I actually saw you, and I was, I started in Deerfield Beach.
Yes, you did.
I started the morning and opened up a polling place in Deerfield Beach. Around midday, I was in Coconut Creek, and then I finished the evening down in Miramar. So as much as I would love to take credit, I was out there at the polling places, learning, learning this, this, my new role from the ground up, and the staff did an amazing job, and I give all the credit to them.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, really appreciate it.
Well, thank you all for having me. If there aren't any other questions, not to, not to rush away, but I appreciate you all having me on.
Great night, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you all for having me, take care.
No, of course, or city attorney, excuse me.
Item number two is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Chapter Two Administration, Article Two, Boards, Committees, Commissions, Division Thirteen, Deerfield Beach Education Advisory Board of the City Code, to authorize the Education Advisory Board to review applications and recommend nominees for a high school academic scholarship, and to provide for removal of board members due to unexcused absences, providing for codification, severability, conflicts, and an effective date. This is a second reading, public here.
Commission? Any, any comments from the commission before we open it to the public? Okay, open it to the public, even from the public here, item number two. On item number two. Don't see anyone's hands up, I'll make that closing to the public then, for item number two. I know this is a, it's probably something I'll bring up at the end, but I know one of the concerns we have is the ability for people to, you know, still during COVID, people don't want to come out in person to the meetings, and it's causing a problem for us when it comes to having a quorum, and I've had a discussion with you, Mr. City Attorney, can you explain it a little bit, and how we can't really make too many adjustments on that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the sunshine law does provide for, you know, you need to have a quorum there, there, there's an Attorney General opinion that provides that the quorum needs to be satisfied by an in-person forum, so you need to have the majority of the board physically present. During the time that the governor issued his order many, many months ago, and when COVID started, he did provide for an exemption from that, but that expired back, I believe, on November 1st of 2020, you know, so the only other option would be, you know, for the city to take, you know, action, and, you know, at this point, you know, you'd have to make certain findings and justifications to do that. So as of right now, we need an in-person requirement for, for those boards, based on the sunshine law, Attorney General.
Thank you, I see that, on the reopenings of the public, see our hands up now, Chris Partak, name and address, for the record.
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast Second Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida, 33441. I serve on the cultural committee, and we had to cancel our meeting last evening because we did not have enough of a quorum in-house. I know that that has been an issue with us in the past as well, having certain people, certain members of the organization do not feel comfortable coming in-house for meetings. They have no problem Zoom meetings, but they cannot come in-house for meetings. Is, it is at all possible to be able to change that in our charter, so that we can actually have all of our participants participate? It's very important. There's only eight of us on the committee as it is, so it's very important for all, for everybody to be able to participate and have a say in what goes on. The other aspect of this also is the unexcused absences, and also a certain number of excused absences. Currently, there is no limit to, there's no limit to excused absences on our board, and I feel that that needs to be addressed. If you can't come to a meeting, and you call in and get an excused absence for 12 meetings in a row, you're not really serving the board or the city in which you've been appointed to do. So that is something that I think also needs to be addressed, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any else from the public? Let me close it to the public then.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Hurdak, second by Commissioner Partas, roll call, please.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston?
Yes. Yes.
We are now at the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address, and may speak for three minutes unless extended, for one additional minute by the mayor. This is the time of the meeting for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. If you have a public, public comment on an item that's on the agenda, the time to do that is when, during that agenda item, when the mayor opens it up to the public, and as a reminder, no comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons' ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Excellent, thank you. Yes, your name and address, for the record, please.
I mean, is, Anderson Ginoz?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Anderson Ginoz.
Thank you. Your, your address, please?
Is police issues on the agenda as well, or not?
No, you're right.
So, what I would like to know is, I do what they call cop watch, so I record your officers on duty, and I'm trying to understand a town that has 60% white, you know, people, whatever, but 80% of the stops are African-American, and the complaint I get from the community is always that they smell marijuana, that's how they stop them from the vehicle, or they figure out there's a window tent issue, but what I would like to know is, your police vehicles, they have very, very dark tent windows, in the city of Deerfield Beach, so how does the community needs to respond to that type of, you know, craziness that you guys are doing? You're stopping them for window tent, but your officers got darker tinted, they did. So how does that work? Is that a double standard of what? I'm paying taxes right now, I see cop cars sitting on the lot with no person in the vehicle, it's, it's, it's illegal in the state of Florida to have a vehicle running without a person in the vehicle, and there's no emergency going on in your block, is it? So, I mean, it's, it's very trouble for me, because, you know, 60% white population in the city of Deerfield Beach, but 80% of your stop involve an African-American person. Why is that, sir? I mean, anybody gonna answer me, man?
We'll answer at the end, if you want to speak, please.
But the bottom line is, it's trouble for me, man, and there's more people that don't want to talk, so.
Sure. Anyone else from the public?
So it's.
Your name and address for the record.
My name is Russell, Anderson, 75, Southwest Third Street. All right, so exactly six days ago, my boyfriend and my mother-in-law's husband were supposed to go to the diversion store, we just, they just stepped outside of their apartment, like literally just stepped outside of the door, and all of a sudden, I have her husband on the mound, and he started recording, because they literally just stepped out the door, and they didn't know why he was being thrown on the ground already, they didn't even ask any questions, so we were kind of confused, so he started recording, and then you have Officer, I think, C I or C J Kade, who prompted, the one of the ladies inside of, I have a video of everything, if you'd like to see, but you have a lady who said, look, he's recording, you can hear that in the video, she says, look, he's recording, and then Officer C I or C J Kade looks up at him, sees that he's recording, and then prompts him to back up, which he was nowhere close, but he still prompts him back up, which he complies, he backs up into his own front porch stoop, there's like a stoop, and it's like, this porch, this, where his home, and all of a sudden, they go back and forth for a while, because he wants, the officer, C J Kade, wants him to go inside of his house, but yet, that's, he can't do that, because he's standing on his own porch, just because he's recording, he wants to force him inside of his own house. So then I see the, I hear the commotion, and you and my mother-in-law try to rush outside, and then that's when things start to get out of hand, Officer C J Kade throws him on the ground, and starts to punch him in the back of the head, while you have other officers standing on his leg, like, if you see, like, I'm sorry, if you see his leg, he had, like, bruises to his leg, like, they're just starting to scramble, really, just now, and it was swelling, like, every time he brushes knees popping, like, they were standing on his back, punching him in the back of the head, like, I don't understand, they had no reason to arrest him, he was on his front porch recording. Then, Mom, I was trying to get out, I was trying to get out, you know, to see what was going on, because I was worried, and my mother-in-law, like, another officer was pushing the door back, explaining to me that, and so, one time when she slammed the door back, I don't know which officer it was, I'm sorry, but, one time when she slammed the door back, it slammed my foot in the door, and it slammed my mother-in-law's fingers in the door, which also caused damage to her fingers. So we, and then, they tried to say that he had a warrant, but she didn't even have a warrant, he doesn't have a warrant at all, and they, they tried to say, after the warrant, what they tried to say was wrong was that he disrupted. Oh, yes, please?
Sure.
And after, after the warrant, they tried to say that he was disrupting justice, yeah, it was disruption of justice, obstruction of justice, I'm sorry, and then he was released on our, ROR, yeah, which didn't make any sense to me, it seems like they just threw charges on him because he was recording. So what I did is, I took the initiative during this situation to do the same exact thing he was doing. I took my phone, and I went just as close as he did, and started recording. None of the officers touched me, none of the officers told me to back up, none of the officers did anything, but yet, I was doing the same thing he was, and I didn't get arrested, I didn't get thrown in the ground. So I wanted to know, why is that? Because it caused damage to my mother-in-law's fingers, she was bleeding, they smashed my foot in the door, they were stepping on, they were literally stepping on his leg, they had all their weight on his one leg, it was just a mess, I'm sorry, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Name and address, you can record.
DeNajah Allen, 175 Southwest Third Street.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, as she was saying, the officer, I was recording, officer, I walked outside, I seen that, I stepped out, was being attacked by about six or seven officers, and I know that's.
I apologize, but we are recording, and there's an impending criminal case, I just want to make sure you don't still have rights.
Okay, thank you.
Also, there was about seven officers on top of him, so that's what made me record, because I heard something, I was inside of the house, going down, I heard a spilling, I walked outside, I seen that it was seven officers on them, and I started recording. When I started recording, there were two officers got up, started walking towards me, I seen that there were two officers walking towards me, and as me lined up around, seeing this all the time, I already knew what they were going to do to me, so I backed up, once he said back up, I backed up onto my porch, I was standing next to my door, and the one officer, and it was an African-American officer, the C J Kade, I think, I believe that's the name, he was standing right in front of me, with no mask on whatsoever, and I'm pretty sure he's supposed to wear a mask, and he was telling me, back up, go in the house, and I was saying, I don't have to go in the house on my porch, why would I go in my house if I'm on my porch? You can't do anything to me. He was, he was being aggressive since the moment I started recording. Once I, once I backed up, he walked up to me, and the one officer walked next to me, so he kept being more and more aggressive, he was trying to get a reaction out of me, for me to be aggressive with him, and as the video shows, I wasn't being aggressive at all. Yes, I had my words with him, but I was not being aggressive, no words were violent words at all, there was no reason for him to grab me, twist my arm. No words were violent words at all. There was no reason for him to grab me, twist my arm. That's an assault to me. He assaulted me. Because I believed if I would've touched the police officer, it would've been assault, right? If I grabbed a police officer's arm, that's assault, alright?
Right, continue.
So he grabbed my arm, he twisted my arm. They tried to slap my phone out of my hand, picked me up, body slamming to the floor. I was still recording. He snatched my phone out of my hand and threw it. And the video shows all of them, everything. And as I'm laying on the floor, another officer stares over my head, punched me in my head. Another officer was standing on my leg. Literally, I felt that he was stomping on my leg. He was sitting on my lower back, literally putting me in handcuffs. Then they were arresting me for resisting arrest and obstruction of justice, which I was never resisting arrest at all. And nobody said a word. I was not, I was not resisting at all.
Would you like another minute, sir? Would you like another minute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Not seeing anybody else coming forward? Anyone online? Is anyone written in? Okay.
Can I have another minute?
No, you cannot, sir. We've exhausted time. We can give you an extension as well. Um, I'm gonna close it to the public at this point. Um, I, I did speak to your mother, um, on Thursday. Uh, and I spoke to Mr. Anderson, uh, or at least that's how he identified himself, I think, a couple times, is that. Um, the gentleman, the first speaker, spoke to him on Thursday as well, and I've seen the videotape that your mother sent me. I've also seen some of the other tapes that have been posted online. And I, I keep hearing very different stories. From your mother, from even from what you've said tonight, and the officers I spoke with, I could speak to our chief, I spoke to our city manager on this to have a reach out to you. I know your mother has gone downtown, like, to file a formal complaint regarding it. Um, and the stories vary depending on the times that I've heard it. Um, hopefully we can get to the bottom of it. Certainly if there's an issue, I will let them know what it is. I don't know where someone gets statistic that eighty percent of the stops are African-American. I don't know, I'd like to see where those statistics actually come from, or if those are just something that are made up. Excuse me, sir, you cannot speak from the crowd, okay? So if you have that, feel free to show it to me at the end of the meeting. I'd be happy to see the statistics, where you get those from. But certainly it's something we can look into, for sure. And I've asked the city manager, uh, to look into it and talk to our chief, please, about that. Thank you.
Okay, we are now at the consent agenda, uh, board appointments portion of tonight's meeting. Items nine, uh, eight, uh, excuse me, items three through seven are the board appointments that are on consent, Mayor.
Okay, is there, are there any polls for items three, three, six of the board appointments?
Seven, Mayor, three through seven.
So, any polls from the commission? Is there anyone from the public who care to comment on items three, four, five, six, or seven? Now, so do you want me to close it to the public, commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion from Commissioner Kudak, second person, Commissioner Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay.
We are now at the consent agreements and expenditure request portion of tonight's agenda items eight through eleven.
Sir, anyone from the public who care to comment on item eight, nine, ten, or eleven? Anyone online? Is there anyone written in? No? Got a big out there? Okay, commission, do we have any polls for eight, nine, ten, or eleven? I'm sorry? Yes, have we closed the public hearing? If you'd like to comment, we, we can discuss afterwards if you'd like to sit around. Ladies and gentlemen, they're leaving. Okay. So eight, nine, ten, or eleven?
Motion to approve.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, because there's dollars, we're gonna have to do a roll call vote, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So if we do a roll call vote, we have a motion from Commissioner Parnas looking for a second. Second, Commissioner.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner, you got it?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor President?
Yes.
Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Item number twelve is a resolution of the City Commission at the State of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving and authorizing execution of a design build construction agreement with Shift Construction and Development, Inc., for the Center for Active Aging Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed eleven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Commission? Any comments? City, uh, city manager?
Yes, Mayor, good evening. David Santucci, City Manager. Uh, this evening I do have a brief staff presentation, uh, to go over this item. Uh, and I would like for Ms. Priscilla Sagelneck, our city engineer, to provide that.
Hi, good evening. Priscilla Sagelneck, City Engineer for the City of Deerfield Beach. Uh, so tonight we have an update on the Center for Active Aging. And also we're here tonight to discuss, um, pursuing the construction agreement with Shift Construction and Development. Um, so in front of you is a rendering of the proposed twenty-two thousand square foot Center for Active Aging. Next slide, please. And I, well, tonight we'll discuss the, the purpose of the, uh, construction agreement, the scope of the work entailed. Uh, I'll take.
Uh, I'm sorry, Miss Gill, can you hold on a moment, please? If I can ask them to close the doors so we can walk, there's some conversation in the lobby. I'm sorry, Miss Gill, go ahead.
Uh, so taking you through the agenda for tonight, we'll discuss the purpose of tonight's meeting, the scope of work, uh, timeline of events, uh, that have transpired to date, uh, give you a current status of events, uh, discuss the project budget recommendations, and then take you through the next steps. Next slide, please. So again, tonight's purpose again is to request, uh, resolution, uh, from the City Commission approving and authorizing the execution of the Design Build Construction Agreement with Shift Construction and Development for the Center for Active Aging in an amount not to exceed eleven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars with sixty-four cents. Next slide, please. The scope of work in, uh, Shift's construction agreement is the design permitting and construction for, uh, the maintenance of onsite owner operations, uh, throughout construction, uh, phased demolition of our existing buildings, the construction of the new Center for Active Aging, as well as the new preschool, site improvements and utilities to support the new construction, and resurfacing of the south parking lot. Uh, the total estimated project duration for this, uh, uh, construction, uh, design and construction is six hundred calendar days with final acceptance within a hundred and twenty days. Next slide. And taking you through, uh, kind of the history of this project and what's transpired, particularly through our procurement phase. Um, in May of twenty eighteen was when we retained Walter Zachariah Architects for our Design Criteria Professional. Uh, in June of twenty nineteen, we began the first step of a two-step process in shortlisting, uh, qualified firms. Uh, this was RFQ twenty eighteen, nineteen oh six, that pre-qualified our vendors. In May of twenty twenty, uh, we did the second step of this process, which was an RFP. And it was at that time that, um, all proposals were rejected and it was determined to rebid the project. Um, so we did rebid the project and in September we came back to commission uh, with, uh, some recommendations for ranking. And, uh, we, uh, again were advised to, uh, do some further, uh, oral presentations for shortlisting. And in October of twenty twenty, we conducted those oral presentations and brought back the rankings in November to the City Commission for approval. And those rankings, uh, did top rank Shift Construction and Development, uh, in conjunction with Sina Lasky Romanik Saidi as the designer and builder for, for this project. Next slide, please. So where we are today, uh, due to the amount of time that has transpired, um, the city's energy performance project with Siemens has concluded. Originally, the RFP intended for us to, uh, negotiate a portion of Siemens' contract in that energy performance agreement. However, since that, um, that project is now over, uh, the city had two options. We could negotiate directly with Siemens, uh, to bring them on as a contractor in conjunction with Shift. Or we could work with Shift to have Shift subcontract Siemens. And, um, as it turns out, we did some value engineering with Siemens. And Shift was able to take some of the scope from Siemens to reduce the cost to the city by subcontracting with Siemens. Uh, so the city feels that that is the most advantageous position at this point. Um, the base bid from Shift for, uh, the original, uh, RFP was ten million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, one hundred and forty, uh, nine dollars. Um, now, after negotiations and value engineering with Siemens in conjunction with Shift, um, we were able to, uh, negotiate Siemens down to seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars for all of the services, which include, uh, lighting, uh, fire, security, and their building automation system. Um, and this, this was a savings potentially of up to three hundred thousand dollars, uh, because we were originally looking at over a million dollars with all of these components. So this culminates in a total contract value of eleven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighteen, uh, eleven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine eight, nine eighteen. Um, so that, that's where we are after negotiations. We did spend quite a bit of time, uh, back and forth trying to value engineer this project, uh, to give the city the most advant- advantageous, advantageous position. Next slide, please. Um, the, the slide shows you the, uh, intended budget for this project. Um, you'll notice an old fund, which is Fund Three Seventeen at the top. This was an old two thousand, um, year bond fund, uh, that still has a balance, so we intend to use, uh, this, the oldest money first, obviously. Uh, and in addition to that, we have the twenty eighteen bond, which had twelve million dollars, uh, twelve million, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars appropriated for the Center for Active Aging. So these two balances combined provide us more than what we need, uh, for the construction, uh, design build phase of this project. We do also have a construction administration component, which is the component that will be the third-party, um, architect engineer that will, uh, be the agent to the city throughout the construction project, uh, project, ensuring that the design builder meets the design intent of that original design criteria package. And, and so that, the intent of the city is to retain Walter Zachariah, uh, to ensure compliance with the design build contract. Next slide. So, uh, tonight, again, we're, we're requesting that the City Commission approve execution of this agreement, uh, in this amount with Shift Construction and Development. Next slide. And then just to give you, uh, an idea of what the next steps will be, um, upon contract execution and issuance of our purchase order, uh, we will schedule a pre-construction meeting with the stakeholders and the contractor, sit everybody down in a room, and, um, uh, flesh out schedules, uh, phasing of, of use of the building and understanding of timeline for the design and permitting phase. Um, and we will issue a notice to proceed. And upon issuance of that notice to proceed, the contractor will begin their construction draw, uh, their construction drawings. And this is taking that design criteria package that Walter Zachariah, uh, had, uh, fleshed out and taking it to a full one hundred percent construction drawing that will be permitted through the Building Department and all jurisdictional agencies. Uh, once permits are secured, only then will you actually see construction begin out on the site, where you'll see demolition uh, and construction, um, you know, shovels and, and equipment mobilized to the site. So there will be some time in advance, uh, where you won't see any activity and that will be because we are in the design and permitting phase of the project. Um, finally, um, within that seven hundred and twenty days, we anticipate project acceptance and then we'll begin a warranty period. Um, so those are the steps through, through the, um, next seven hundred and twenty days. Um, so anticipating that we bring this project in within the two years.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Commission, do you have any questions?
Yeah, my hand up.
Commissioner Parnas, I see your hand raised.
Yes, uh, will the electricity for this project be placed underground?
Uh, there are no plans at this time for undergrounding the, the, um, overhead power lines on the street. However, what services the building, uh, we may be able to bring underground. Is that the question?
Yeah, my question is, will the building have underground electric?
Yeah, that, 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 that will be part of our utilities phase, yes.
Okay, thank you.
For the building, but not the street itself. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this may be a question more for the city manager than, um, the city engineer. So the slides went pretty quick through the presentation, but the notes that I wrote down is that the total bond monies allocated to the Center for Active Aging were twelve million, sixty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, in addition to that, we're also using old bond money for this project in the amount of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty-four dollars. And the amount that we're being asked to prove tonight is eleven million, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cents. So if I take the amount of the contract tonight, the eleven point two million figure, and I deduct the old bond money of three hundred and sixty-two thousand, I come to ten million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. So, and the new contract is, um, so we only need ten point eight million of the twelve million from the new bond money. So if, if my math is going correct, what are we doing with the extra one point two million bond money that we're not using? Does that make sense?
Yes.
It does. It does, Commissioner. I appreciate it. I'm not checking your math as you're talking, but you're, I'm, I'm sure that you are correct. The, um, the, so we, as, uh, Mrs. Sagelneck did mention, uh, we still have a, a portion of the, of this entire project requires construction administration. So those will be additional costs that the, that the City Commission will see at a later date. Um, additionally, in this market right now, uh, as anyone in the construction industry will tell you is that we are seeing uh, costs for construction rise tremendously, especially when it comes to building materials like steel, aluminum, and lumber. Uh, so although this project may be at or below budget, we still have two other projects that we are, um, working on right now, two major construction projects that we're working on right now that are related to this fund, which is the Tignor Center and City Hall. So I think, uh, at this point in time, our recommendation would be to do nothing with those funds. We need to see how the other two projects come in with these rising construction costs before we, um, contemplate any additional uses for them.
What is the, I mean, I just don't want to pay interest on money we don't, we're not going to, to use. Um, but what is the interest? Do you know the interest rate that we're paying on the bond money?
Off, offhand, I do not. I, I, I do remember it being relatively low, um, at the time, um, but I think, I can get that information for you and can get that back.
Yeah, I remember, remember being low too, and I apologize for the pop quiz tonight, but, uh, this, the slides went kind of fast and, and furious tonight, so I, I'll have a conversation, you know, with you, you know, later after the meeting about, um, you know, just the, the funds and, and how we use them and is there opportunity to pay anything back quicker, or if it's better to hold it in contingency due to rising, um, construction costs. So that's a conversation we can, uh, digest, um, going forward. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Kudak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Um, the first one, and, and some of it is, is, is design questions. Um, uh, the daycare, is the daycare going to be included in this, uh, this property? Uh, at one point, we had the daycare off, I think, at the Tignor Center and, you know, we really wanted to make sure that the daycare is gonna stay in this facility. Um, the second is with regards to, um, hurricane proofing and hardening of this facility. If you could talk a little bit about what the plans are for that, and then I have. And then I have a, a third question that I want to ask as well.
Uh, so regarding the first question, the daycare facility is part of this overall cost. Uh, the daycare facility was a bit, a bit alternate that was accepted as part of the overall, uh, budget cost. Um, the second question, uh, South Florida building code does require up to a hundred and eighty mile per hour, you know, wind design. Uh, so that has already been anticipated, uh, in the design criteria package.
So will this property be able to be used as a, um, uh, a place that residents can go if a hurricane is coming or anything? Or, or city staff has, you know, has, has a place for, for operations? Uh, I would think if, you know, w- we're building something, uh, hurricanes are getting worse, they're getting more frequent. Uh, are, are we looking to making this building that type of, uh, an alternative use?
I do know that Emergency Operations Center requires stricter building code. I don't believe that was what was applied to this building.
Okay. Uh, the third question is with regards to, to, uh, to cost, uh, and, uh, piggybacking off my fellow Commissioner, um, Drosky. You know, the original bids for this project went anywhere from nine million, sixteen million dollars. And, you know, the, the concern I have is, you know, the, the company we chose is wonderful and do a great job, uh, eleven point two million dollars. Uh, but one of the, the, the challenges that I've seen is, is that we approved eleven point two million dollar project and then all of a sudden cost overruns and, and, you know, additional unforeseen expenses or increases in construction and all of a sudden we wound up paying sixteen million dollars for it. Uh, so what protection does the city have that, um, this project is going to cost eleven point two million dollars and not sixteen million when you open the doors?
So Commissioner, to, to address that question, that was a big piece of the negotiation that we had with, with the, uh, the contractor. Um, being that this is a design build, the risk to come in on time, on budget is, um, is on the, the consultant and is on the, the construction contractor. However, we also built in, with into this contract some room for exorbitant cost increases on materials. And so we've come to terms on that. And I would ask, uh, City Attorney to maybe speak a little bit more on that specific term because we recognize that, uh, you know, in the cases of, of some of the materials that I had mentioned, we're seeing costs increase upwards of fifty to seventy percent. So, um, we needed to recognize that and make sure that there was, um, uh, that was contemplated in the contract.
That's your question.
I can speak to it as well. Uh, as the manager mentioned, you know, we, we are aware of those issues and we were able to, you know, work with the contractor to address, you know, a lot of that upfront. You know, rather than get into the contract, start the process and then have these, you know, huge cost increases, potentially argue about a first major event or things like that. Uh, we did create a process by which if there were one of these exorbitant increases, the contractor can show us that documentation, they would have to document it. And we can work, uh, with the contractor along with our consultant. And, you know, so long as whatever proposed change, uh, they, they are providing does not material affect the original intended design and quality, uh, you know, as verified by our consultant, uh, that the city would consider them and, and we wouldn't unreasonably deny that. So versus, you know, leaving it up in the air and fighting about it later or potentially, uh, impacting the, uh, timeline for completion of the project. Uh, that's how we address that, understanding that these market conditions, uh, do exist.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mayor Commissioners, how are you? My name is Rod Firehough, Attorney at the Corporate Fire, representing Schiff Construction. Sitting next to me is Justin Schiff, he is the Principal of Schiff Construction. And in the back, uh, raise your hand, you'll see other members of the design team who wanted to introduce ourselves to you. And all we're going to say, just stay staffed, they have some job negotiating this and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Otherwise, we look forward to a healthy, successful long partnership with the city, but not over the construction side.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here, Mr. Schiff. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Commissioner Parnas, second by, uh, Commissioner Douda. Give a roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky.
Yes.
Commissioner Douda.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Preston.
Yes.
Mayor Vance.
Yes.
Thank you.
Number thirteen is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving the agreement with Vector Fleet Management LLC for supplemental fleet maintenance and repair services, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for a three-year term with two additional three-year renewal terms, providing for implementation and an effective date.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor, um, for, for this item. We also do have a brief staff presentation and I would ask that Mr. Chad Gressik come up to provide that to, uh, to the public and to the commission. Thank you.
The mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good to see everybody in person again. Uh, Chad Gressik, Director of Sustainable Management, City of Deerfield Beach. I do have a brief presentation tonight to, uh, discuss this item. Uh, if we can get to the next slide, please. So, uh, just want to give you a brief overview of the fleet management division, some of the challenges that we currently face, uh, some of the actions that we implemented to try to address those challenges, uh, introduce vector fleet management, the vendor that we're recommending for this, uh, this work, and certainly, uh, staff's recommendations. Next slide, please. So our fleet management division, uh, really the main purpose obviously is to keep vehicles up, keep them, uh, operational and do that in a safe and efficient, cost-effective manner. Um, it's part of vision, in addition to maintaining equipment, uh, and, and vehicles, uh, currently at two hundred and twenty-seven units. Uh, we do manage the city's fuel systems throughout the city. Uh, there are currently four fueling sites. We are in the process of, uh, of collapsing some of those sites, uh, to consolidate some of our fueling, uh, capabilities. Uh, there are a lot of costs associated with maintaining these sites. So by closing some of these sites, we, the city will be able to, uh, save a considerable amount of money. Uh, in addition to that, we do the fuel inventory for the city. Uh, as you're aware, we do have a new C and G station, uh, that's going to be coming officially online here very shortly. Uh, so the fleet management division will be overseeing some of those activities. And of course, uh, the environmental appliance assurance for all of these sites is, is fairly significant. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, uh, we, we work with the departments in the acquisition of vehicles as well as the surplus and final disposition of vehicles. Next slide, please. So our current, uh, roster, uh, we do have four administrative positions, those are all currently filled. We also have eight mechanic positions, uh, three of those positions are currently vacant. And I'll get into a little bit more of that, uh, later on in the presentation. Next slide. Uh, just a breakdown of our, of our rolling stock, uh, we do have two hundred and twenty-seven units, as I indicated. Most of those units are the light duty kind and I'll provide a little bit of, uh, information as to what makes up light duty versus heavy duty. Uh, most of the light duty equipment resides in Parks and Recreation. Um, and then on the heavy duty side, most of the, uh, heavy duty equipment, your solid waste collection equipment resides in my department, the Sustainable Management Department. Next slide, please. So your light duty equipment is your sedans, your pickups, uh, your vans, your buses, your trailers. Uh, and then, as I mentioned, your heavy duty equipment is really your solid waste collection equipment. Uh, some of your utility trucks, your dump trucks, uh, your back con trucks and, and your yellow construction iron. Next slide. So our challenges are really twofold for the most part. So we do have only thirty percent of our stock is heavy duty. However, uh, it represents a significant part of the work in the garage. Um, there's, there's all sorts of, uh, estimates and equivalencies that, that we would use in regards to, uh, a heavy duty unit versus a light duty unit. Um, it could be anywhere from eight to one, uh, as far as the, the necessary effort that needs to be administered to those vehicles. Uh, so sixty-seven percent of all our repairs are associated with heavy duty equipment. Seventy-nine percent of the costs, uh, from this year, eighteen year date are associated with our heavy duty equipment. Um, as you know, um, solid waste equipment, uh, is used quite a bit. Um, so it's, it's, uh, needed during operational hours. Um, and, and because it, you, these units are down, uh, and we cannot, um, utilize them, that, that causes multiple strains on our operations and ultimately, uh, impacts uptime and the availability of those units and, and ultimately our ability to service the customers and the residents. And, and currently this week, we're actually less than that. We're actually about sixty-five percent availability on our solid waste equipment. So, um, we're, we're, we're having a tough week unfortunately. Next slide. The other challenge is obviously hiring and, and retaining our mechanics. Um, you know, this is a, this nationwide issue. Um, this is not something specific to Deerfield Beach. This is a challenge that I think we talked about previously. Um, you know, I do have a, like, chart there which you can see because the photo's there. However, um, there's some guidelines in regards to industry standards, uh, how many mechanics you should have for, uh, various, uh, classification of equipment. Um, you can't see it, but, but our ratios are, are fairly off. Um, we've had an inability to hire and, and retain qualified mechanics. Um, you know, we've attempted to fill certain positions since two thousand and eighteen. Um, we have reduced the requirements for some of these positions in order to, uh, you know, bring in folks that can be trained and, and keep on board with us here. However, we just really can't keep up with competition. And I don't know if you can see, I don't know if, uh, the clerk moves that, um, that, that, you know, the interest.
The salary range is sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand.
Yeah, so this is, this is an actual, uh, job posting from Indeed, the job posting site. Um, you can see there's a ten thousand dollar signing bonus that they're providing. And then there's a salary range from sixty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. Our maximum rate is, is in the, you know, seventy thousand dollar range. So that's our highest paid mechanic. So, um, it's very difficult for us to compete with those types of salaries. And obviously, we don't provide sign-on bonuses as well. Um, so when we can't bring in the mechanics, we obviously have to make repairs somehow so we outsource to external vendors. Um, and that obviously impacts the ability to have equipment available and ready as well. Next slide, please. So what have we done? Um, you know, one of the first things we tried to do was, was create a second shift. Um, you know, where we would be able to have mechanics work on the equipment when it's not needed. Um, you know, that, that really didn't go over well because the mechanics really didn't, um, like working those hours in reality. Um, and, and therefore it actually created a reverse, uh, effect, so to speak. Um, we have been developing a pre-qualified list of external vendors that we can use to expedite, uh, repairs. We've increased the amount of repairs, uh, by thirty percent by outsourcing vendors. Um, we have reached out to multiple organizations, uh, you know, to try to find ways to help address our issue. Uh, we did reach out to our neighbors, uh, next door to us. Um, unfortunately, you know, they, they really focus on light duty, um, need, the, the light duty mechanics. So it, it really doesn't solve our issue with, with diesel mechanics. And, uh, we, we also continue to try to incentivize, uh, opportunities for our internal employees. You know, provide certifications for training and other opportunities, uh, to try to retain them and keep them motivated, um, you know, working. So ultimately, uh, none of those actions really, uh, helped to address our problems. So we developed a request proposal, uh, for supplemental, uh, fleet repairs, uh, which is why we're here for you tonight. Um, next slide, please. And really the purpose of this is, again, to address our two major issues. This is, uh, our heavy duty equipment uptime as well as our inability to, uh, find and retain, um, mechanics. And, uh, really, as I indicated before, we need to work on this equipment when it's not in use. So, um, there's really a benefit to have a second shift to be able to work on this equipment when it's not needed. Um, work on this equipment on-site so we have the ability to oversee what's going on and have more control. Um, our existing fleet staff under this proposal would continue to, uh, work their same hours, same rates. Um, and basically just, uh, focus on the light duty repairs. Next slide, please. Next slide. If we were on... Slide ten. Okay. Sorry.
Mr. Gressik, for the sake of time, would you mind maybe, if you have a presentation in front of you, do you mind just, uh, speaking to it?
Absolutely. Thank you. Uh, so, so really one of the anticipated benefits of this program, uh, again, it's going to augment our internal staff, um, allow us to improve our preventative maintenance program across all units. Uh, it will enhance our vehicle availability and uptime. Uh, we are targeting a ninety percent or higher, uh, vehicle availability, uh, once, once we get, uh, things rolling. Uh, it will allow for a seat to be maintained, repaired during the off-hours. Um, creation of a mechanic apprentice program. So this is a big piece of what we've negotiated with Vector. This is an opportunity for up to five City of Deerfield Beach residents per year to essentially go through some of the Vector training program, uh, as a mechanic and ultimately hopefully become placed either within their program or the city program. So this is, this would be a great opportunity for us to solve each other's issues and hopefully bring some, some good residents to, into the industry. Um, and then of course, ultimately, the biggest, the biggest benefit is to provide, uh, better service to our internal and external customers. Let's, I can better move back here. So I'm on slide ten. Want to actually just finish that one? Great. So again, to go through the timeline here, uh, back in November, we, we issued the RFP. Uh, in December, um, the, the committee ranked Vector Fleet Management, uh, the number one, um, vendor. Uh, in February, the site was brought before you for the first time where the, uh, ranking was approved. And then we've been negotiating with Vector, uh, discussing various, uh, items in the contract and site visits, meetings, et cetera, um, up until today. So with that, I would like to introduce, um, Mr. Aubrey Felton, who's here with Vector. Uh, he's going to provide a brief overview of Vector and, and, uh, then I'm going to come back and finish up and then we'll both be available for any questions you might have once we're finished. So with that, if I can have Aubrey come on.
Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My pleasure, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners, happy to be here with you guys. Um, as, uh, Mr. Gressik said, he asked me to, uh, give you sort of an overview of who we are, talk about, uh, some of our capabilities and help you with solving this problem. Um, also address the, uh, technician apprentice program, uh, that negotiated very well on behalf of the city. Uh, so, uh, it's a pretty short presentation, if you'll go to the next slide a little quick. Uh, to go through, I'll go through each of these points. Um, our company's been in business for over thirty-three years. We're probably, you know, we're based out of Charlotte, come on. I personally went here in South Florida and home started for thirty years. We, uh, do nothing but fleet maintenance, that's all we do. We don't lease equipment, we don't, uh, supply drivers, we'll do janitorial services. A lot of companies are competing in our space, offer multiple type co- government contracts like that, this is all we do. Uh, to the point that, uh, Uh to the point that uh our senior leadership, myself included, there's another executive vice president and our CEO are all technicians. We're all keeping it in business with all terminations and with all our exactly what we ask our employees to do so. We're very familiar with the with the issues that Mr. Gresik brought up, with the RP process. Actually, I had some agency in France, the RP, and got to really understand some of the endpoints. Uh we do a lot of refuse trucks, so we're very familiar with that. Um bring it to the next slide, please. So we actually exist in six different segments of the business that affect the city. Um we handle municipalities, so like the city of Deerfield, we do uh large municipalities. Uh as an act, we take care of our county sheriff's office. We've got that contract for six years now. Running a night shift till midnight, uh two locations, popular beach and modern lakes. So if we're familiar with nightlife, we also do the city coconut creek here, hopefully. Uh but we do those throughout the country. Uh most of the privatized uh or outsourced fleet management exists strangely enough in Texas. Four or so, those are big markets. Uh we also do big mining operations. So if you've seen in Central Florida, you drive across over to Tampa, you'll see those big phosphate mines out there with mosaic mining. We take care of all that equipment. So all that heavy caterpillar equipment, uh big mining trucks like you see here in the picture, that's all the equipment we take care of. We've been doing that for over twenty years. So very familiar with the online heavy needs and parts management, which will definitely benefit the city. Our our national uh parts programs are heavily negotiated, very specific to the types of equipment you have. Um and we feel that uh even with our our small market on the parts as we uh as we work with the city, uh it ultimately saves saves money. I've actually seen uh a gap from uh fleet manager, our fleet uh list of the existing inventory, having to go into spot check new segments of the inventory. And our buying price is anywhere between twenty and thirty percent less than what you have in your system at right now. So that in itself would be a savings to the city. Uh we also do uh private fleets, so we do like Sigma Foods, Cisco Foods, we do over the road trucking for career trucks. We do dairy farms in America as well. So we're very good with class eight trucks and trailers. Uh we do big uh utility operations, so we do actually the largest um co-op uh utility in the country, which is uh Peternalis Electric Co-op in Texas. We handle mine locations for that. And we do strangely, uh one of the things we do is we do OEM. So you see a picture up there, it's all about the Steven in the bottom left corner. What you see there is you see about four thousand freight liner trucks, class eight trucks. So we handle and have for over twenty years, all the freight liner, class eight truck turn-ins all around the United States. We do it across, it was three, now it's two. It's in locations, so we have inspectors all around the country that go out and inspect a leased vehicle before it's brought back in electronically. And then once it's brought back in, we have a team of technicians in these locations that get them up to resellable condition. We handle the remarketing process with uh with Daimler or Freightliner, if you will. Uh and we exercise that equipment until it's sold and how they would dispose it. So that's one of the six segments we exist in and uh align very well with what the city's looking for here. If you're happy for it. Next slide please. So uh I wanted to show you just some of the heavy equipment we work on. Uh what we've been doing, like I said, we've been doing this for several decades with the heavy equipment. Um as you see there, the uh as Chad referred to, the yellow iron, we're very familiar with caterpillar equipment. Uh although for you all, the big need here is refuse trucks and we're very familiar with that. Uh you actually have uh side loader refuse trucks, which you're very familiar with, as well as challenging the the uh the issues that happen with side loaders. They save you money on not as many people needed to operate them, but ultimately the repairs cost can get out of control on a smaller truck because of all my problems. So we're very familiar with that and are confident we can help you out. Uh next slide please, real quick. So this is probably a big piece uh that will help the city is that all your new trucks that you're going to are auto car uh manufactured trucks. We are an OEM auto car warranty provider, so no longer your trucks have to be sent out to be serviced under warranty for auto car when you buy a truck. Uh so we will be able to handle that all in-house onsite, process everything through your computer and the credits will come back from the phone and check to the city. And I'll be I'll be done seamlessly for the city without having to go back at that. In itself should be a make, help and say thanks for the state as we move forward. Next slide please. Uh some of the things we're going to bring is uh with our software system, we're going to bring our own software system in and it provides very detailed reporting. What you see here is an actual dashboard we provide our clients to show everything from PM compliance to a lot of technician productivity uh to the types of repairs, uh if they're planned repairs or unscheduled repairs. Uh you get this on a monthly basis. There's also a portal as well where uh Chad and any of his team, uh Mr. Gray, can all log in and see things from that time. It's this next slide please. The big piece uh that you know came up as part of this RP process was this technician training program. So as Chad mentioned, you know, technicians, uh you know, I've been a technician for over thirty years. It's uh it is a unfortunately, it's a challenging world because vocational schools have dried up. It's all offered in high school in most places. Uh it really is sadly for what you saw the pay rates are. I don't think many kids out there know how much they can money they can make being a mechanic. That uh it's very, it's a very lucrative career if you will, if you do it the right way and get the right certifications. So recognizing that uh this is all we do for a business, uh we created our own process in-house to develop our own. So we take uh very green individuals that just have a basic want and desire to be in the business. And we've developed an entire internal program built around OEM uh training as well as our own in-house process, which I'll show you here in a second. Uh but it aligns with all the OEM manufacturers and it covers everything from fire rescue equipment all the way down to small equipment, which is equally as challenging in some cases as heavy equipment. It's not a lot of people that work on tours or a turmoil. So next slide please. So what we've done, as Chad said, is we're going to provide uh five residents every year. So it's five every year. It's a one-year program. We go through um and what this is going to entail is they'll have the opportunity to shadow our staff onsite. Uh we're going to give them uh access to our online training portal, which will give them um you know, in excess of sixty five specific courses. We'll get three different levels of certification. So there's a core basic level class of course, which is eighteen courses, which we designed to take an entry level technician and make them what you would call a C level tech, if you use A, B, and C as your levels. Uh and this would be for a light duty type technician, not necessarily the refuse type tech yet, that's that's the next one. But these are all the basics of how do you work safely on a lift, uh you know, how explanation how fluids work in vehicles, uh basic electrical, air conditioning, basic diagnostic. Um the real uh you're blocking and tackling of our business as well. And then from there, it expands into advanced course. This is just a a picture of what they do. You'll see that's a multimeter on the screen. Uh it's actually very interactive, so they have to use the multimeter to actually hook it upright and use the gauges the correct way to actually test equipment on vehicles. So uh it's a very good learning process. Uh not everybody passes originally and it's self-paced. Uh so we'll be able to help them through that and our trainer, our site manager who's going to be here is an ASE master technician as well. Uh and he'll be able to help all those residents learn the processes they go through the training. Next slide please. So here you can see the breakdown of the advanced classes. So once they go past the first eighteen, there's two different sort of avenues these technicians could go down. Uh and there's really three in the business, right? So there's light duty, which would be police vehicles, small equipments, uh administrative vehicles, Ford F-150s. There's heavy equipment, which is class five to eight trucks, uh including yellow wire, caterpillar equipment, backhoes, things like that. And there was motorcycles, which is a whole different avenue. Fortunately for the city, we're not familiar with that right now. So what we have, uh we're going to offer the residents is they'll be to choose. They can go through either one or they can go through both. If if the people that the city selects to be in this class uh within the year choose, they will learn both skill sets, they go through it, we'll happily take them down both paths. They can learn to be a light duty and a medium heavy duty and then you know, depending on where a job opportunity opens up, they'll have the skill set to go either way in that. Um and then the the last piece of that is obviously tools that come up with the technicians. We have an internal program uh where after the year they decide to stay with our company. Uh we've sort of uh advanced them an entire set of tools uh for for them staying on our commercial year of employment with us. Uh without any cost out of pocket. That's probably the hardest thing for technicians nowadays. Just a basic, I mean, just the basics to work on a police car. You're talking three thousand dollars, four thousand dollars in the the basics toolbox. It's tough for the kids coming out of high school to get involved also. So we provide all that with the tooling, uh obviously the inventory. Next slide please. So here you can see some some pictures of happy folks that have passed the, they get a nicer uh certificate, they get patches on their uniforms. That was kind of where my jacket for that present, they get uh patches for their uniforms and things like that if we will, they put on. Uh but they're they will they will be a recognized technician in history. And our certifications, you see the patches that live in the bottom right hand corner. Uh if you've ever seen an ASE certification, right? They mirror that and our training is equivalent to or higher than ASE. So we're, we can guarantee that our technicians that we train through our program can take the light ASE course classes and pass it. And we will actually reverse it forward. So as these residents go through this course, also we'll get ASE recent certifications. And in our modules, which wasn't included in sixty five, is an entire online um sort of pre-test. Uh we can go through and see if you're going to pass before you're going to go through the money to class as well. So it's all built in. Our goal is when the when the residents get through, at the end, they'll have the choice to either stay over the city. If the city needs less easily with day shift uh for for the open positions you have. Uh or we have contracts all around. We have, I was telling Chad earlier, we have eleven RFPs out proposals we're doing right now for fleet maintenance uh because of some of the issues Chad were up on. Uh so they can come to work for us anywhere um as well. So it'll be their choice. Obviously, the city can take first place on the technicians. Uh next slide please. So with that, I would uh open up to questions. Sorry, I read too kind of fast because we gave you a time off to try to help it. You've answered too long.
I appreciate that. Commissioner, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great, great presentation. I really appreciate it. Really excited about this program. What is the cost to the resident uh for the program? And what are the qualifications of in order to enroll in the program?
The cost will be zero. Okay. Um as far as qualifications go, the discussion point was, we went through the contract negotiation was to develop that as we move forward. Okay. Uh we could give the city a sort of a guideline on what to look for. Uh but we're not a hundred percent sure how the city wants to proceed with that, but we can be involved in the process of that now. Obviously, willing just to learn and and want to be involved in this business is probably the key, an entity process to find out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
How do you go about recruiting uh the five residents? Um and then not only how you go about recruiting them, how then uh for the tools that you get for that five children?
Uh so very similar response to the previous question. Uh we're not the ones choosing the five. We're going to work with the city on that. Uh it's going to be a collective decision as the city wants to enroll in the program. As far though, you know, as far as the program goes, there is uh steps throughout it. So like on a monthly quarterly basis, of the um you know, meetings held with the city to talk about the development of these five individuals and whether or not they're a good fit for the program. But the the uh the actual meat of that entire program is not touched on.
How how effective that process uh is will actually determine the success of really uh of this program. I have talked to uh Mr. Gresik and I think that if we had a communication and a discussions with him, I have with our local high school. You know, having a pool of names and then from that names, an actual recruitment process. Um but as it is right now, and we contacted the the high school, have we?
Right.
Okay. But but that's 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 everybody is not going to go to college. Everybody is not going to go and receive a formal education. So this type of training is uh you know, would be very important and it would actually fit into a lot of kids that probably wouldn't go to college, but they need to know about it. We need to know what is the best way to get the information out and establish a relationship with the high school uh would be big in my opinion.
I agree. I wish somebody would uh come to my high school and told me uh about this at the time. My son and my daughter are both going to state right now and I can assure you they're going to graduate, one's a psychology major, the other's a marketing major. They're not going to make the number of chapters in the spring, making out of college. So uh I'm happy to come down and talk to the high school students. If you can give me an audience, I can get them excited about leaving this field. Having done it for my entire career, I can absolutely get excited about the opportunity.
A very successful person that I'm trying to uh talk to some of our new in the city uh just wasn't good in in formal authentication. He went to vocational law and uh did some testing and ended up doing really well. Today, he is a multi, 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 multi major because he found something that worked.
Right.
You know, and it wasn't just a woman in class. So you know, a program like this identifying the right people for it could be a big win for the city, big win and and it would obviously help only be a lot of strength that we have with the problem that we have uh our heavy duty.
I would agree and I welcome working with the city online, communicating that out. That is the biggest issue to the patient on the opportunity. This is a unique situation. I can assure you, nowhere else in South Florida is this happening with the technician apprentice program inside of this town. Especially all the followers that are out there because I know them all very well. This doesn't exist if you guys are starting something brand new. So it's fantastic.
Thank you, Commissioner Gresik.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I have two two areas that I have questions with. The first uh question is going to be for Mr. Felton and the second question is going to be for Mr. Gresik slash city attorney slash city manager. Um but for Mr. Felton, um first of all, we as the commission have discussed this topic for several years now. And this is nothing that is new to us. So um I'm very much in favor of getting a solution to this problem. But over the years, because the city has had trouble recruiting individuals to be in our program, where are you going to get the labor pool to be able to service our account? I know you have other contracts in South Florida, for example, BSO. So if we can't recruit and hire people for our program, how are you going to be able to do that?
Fair question. Uh to be honest, uh if I were to answer that joke, I'd say that's sort of like asking the Kung Fu Master how he does Kung Fu. I mean, we've been doing this for thirty three years. Uh we are very connected in the industry, between suppliers, between other municipalities, between private industry. Uh myself, I've been in South Florida for over thirty years. I know everybody there is to know in the automotive field down here. That would be uh OEM manufacturers, parts vendors, things like that. But we do have a team of people, because it's all good, because it's only technicians. We have a team of people in our HR department that specialize in mining uh Indeed website as an example uh and reaching out and having conversations with people. And I would tell you that uh very similar to the Vice Mayor's comments, this is all about how you communicate with the potential candidates to have them come in. I mean, uh Chad was right, uh not many people want to work second shift on a refuse truck. That's a tough stuff. Uh so you really need to be able to speak your language and have them understand the benefits of coming to work for a company like Vector. Uh and no disrespect to the city whatsoever, but if you're going to be in the technician business, this is your career, this is your trade. Align yourself as an individual with a company like Vector uh would be very beneficial for their career. Our training program, aside from what you saw on the on the computer screen, they can earn up to five, anywhere between five and ten thousand dollars here training bonuses based on things that they do as they get paid for it. Uh so uh you know, we have, when we come into a project like this, uh myself, uh our director of operations, who's been addicted to handles uh all our government contracts, will be the ones that will personally be involved in having this conversation with those individuals uh and and building that um you know, sort of desire to come to work here. I can I can confidently tell you that the three technician positions and one site management position, all of them are permanently hired except for one. We've already been working on this project uh since it's, I mean, if you go back in time, this contract was supposed to be executed and started on January fifth. So we've been sort of behind the scenes working on this, waiting for this opportunity. And I didn't want to have Mr. Gresik calling up and go, hey, we're ready to go. What are you guys going to do? So we've been working on this behind the scenes. One of the one of the people that's going to be working here already is working night shift over our sheriff's office. Hasn't trained for months on the afternoon on on the plan that hopefully this is going to pass in the coming so. Hopefully that answered your question.
Uh it it does, it it leads me to a follow-up question is how do we become or how do we not become a victim of our success then? If 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 this program is so great, you know, we have current individuals and talent here in the city, what's to prevent you from taking our talent and assigning them to a different contract?
Well, a- as I discussed earlier, you know, as people, as residents come through this program, the first right refusal, if you will, is with the city, they want to come here. Um however, to my point, uh yes, we offer a great opportunity for technicians in this business. I would think though, for residents, you know, the challenge with our company is relocation is always a requirement unless it's going to be on something local. The majority of our contracts are not good. The majority of our contracts are not here in South Florida, not also here to be. So you have to relocate somewhere else to do that, and that's challenging. Especially for the, um, you know, you'd have to assume that most of the people that become just permanent will be on a younger age. Uh, they're starting out looking for a trade or craft, uh, so they're, so they're not gonna be as apt to try to relocate to another place in the country.
Well, that sounds more like the, the, the training program going forward, but what about the existing employees we have now? That's what my question was more directed toward.
Oh, but are recruiting the existing employees?
Correct.
Oh, we, we had no intention of recruiting the existing employees. And, and we wrote in our contract that you can't, uh, hire ours. So it's, it's a fair and equitable law between the two organizations.
Okay, I think the contract is a good segue into my second, um, question. So I'll start with the city attorney and he can deflect to Mr. Gresik or Mr., um, Santucci as, as need be. So one of the other contracts that we discussed that you've had is, is BSO, and I have a copy right here of your contract with BSO. And sadly, I've read it. And one of the, um, provisions that you have in your contract with BSO, section three, is about performance standards. And, and I don't really see, I mean, I see a section nine point three, I see a section nine point six in our contract. But I, I, I really don't see anything that gives us kind of the protections that BSO does when it comes to performance standards. Um, I mean, if it takes fifteen minutes to change something and, and you do it in thirty, then there's gotta be some kind of metrics to be able to measure this. And I think the BSO contract gives a little better way to do it than, than ours does. I don't know if anyone's put any, you know, thought to that is, you know, how do we measure metrics with this program? Is it a success or not going forward? And, and how do we quantify that going forward? Cause I don't really have anything to dig my claws into in the existing contracts.
Understood. Um, I'm, I'm gonna defer a little bit here, um, because there, there were some standards in the RFP. I'm not sure if there are specific uh, as some of the standards in, in the BSO contract, the RFP is incorporated into the, uh, contract that's in front of you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Mr., to Mr. Gresik for.
Okay, so before, okay, okay. So before Mr. Gresik picks up, Mr. City Attorney, where in our contract does it incorporate the, the RFP? Cause that will get us halfway home.
Section one point, or article one point two, Commissioner.
Okay. Uh, all right. While I'm flipping to that, Mr. Gresik, can you jump in and, um, let me know if you're, you know, I mean, this is gonna fall on you. Are you satisfied with being able to, you know, quantify and metrically being able to um, see the performance standards?
Uh, absolutely, Commissioner. And you, one of the first things that we're gonna do once this thing, uh, hopefully gets approved is, is sit down with Vector and start to delve into our challenge in more specifics. Um, you know, a lot of, uh, effort's going to be needed to get our equipment to a certain level initially. And then, once we reach that level, uh, you know, then we, we put in some metrics, as I mentioned before, a ninety percent, uh, vehicle availability. Um, you know, in specifics to the garbage trucks, um, you know, we would outline specific number of units that needed to be available on a particular day to allow us to service our residents. So all of those things would be, um, you know, discussed and, and codified with Vector as part of the, the ongoing measurement of success. Uh, and ultimately, if the equipment's not up, we know it's not working, right? So, um, you know, that, that's gonna tell itself as well.
And if I, if I may add, Chad, one of the things to note, uh, Commissioner Gresik, in the, the, the contract with Broward Sheriff's Office, a lot of the, the stringentness with the metrics that they have have to do with the type of service that the Broward Sheriff's Office provides. Uh, so being emergency man, or excuse me, emergency vehicles. Uh, so they have, they have the, probably the highest standard, I would say, in terms of those, um, those uptimes that we have. Again, as Mr. Gresik did say, uh, we're looking for, for industry standards, which again hover between ninety to ninety-five percent, which is built into the contract for the R.
So my, my, my last comment, it's really gonna be a comment then, is as we increase efficiencies and as the trucks are on the road more and there's less downtime, then I, um, I'll, I'll take Chad, your department, since you're at the microphone there, then the efficiencies are going to, uh, improve. So I would expect we're going to have future conversations, uh, about improving, you know, efficiencies. I mean, for example, you know, maybe changing days, you know, and routes or whatever, um, cause you're gonna improve your efficiencies if this program is such a success that we should be able to provide the residents a better service going forward.
Absolutely, Commissioner. And ultimately, that's, that's where we're at today, you know? Uh, we're getting very close to not being able to meet that standard. And, and with this program, we will be able to, um, you know, continue to provide those services at the level that, uh, we know the residents expect.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further right now.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, who that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just some follow-up questions for Mr. Felton. Um, so as far as the number of staff for the second ship, um, has the staff already been hired or is it the intent that this internship program is actually going to fill out the second ship? You start with that.
Sure. Uh, well, as I mentioned before, we've, uh, we've already, uh, pre-offered appointments to a couple of individuals that have not started with the ship. One individual's already working for us, and the night shift at, uh, Lauderdale Lakes, cause we do have a company there as well. Um, but we have no intention of, of hiring off of this program. In fact, this program was subsequent to the RFP process. This was an ask after. We'd already made our commitment on how we're gonna run this contract.
Okay, so, so the second ship and those are, those are your employees. Um, how are you going to recruit for them? We, we have tried to recruit for them, uh, in, in here in South Florida for years. So I, I just, you, you already have them on, uh, on staff or, or you're gonna be pulling them from, from other places. I, I just wanna make sure, you know, six months later, we're still government mechanic. And we're still in the same boat, you know, that we are without Vector.
You're right. Uh, a couple of points to that. Um, there's not one bullet for highly hired technicians. I just like a myriad of ways, like I mentioned earlier, where we have a team of people in our Charlotte McConan office that it sort of data mined through the, uh, job posting boards.
I know a little bit about HR.
Right, so there you go. So, uh, we have that piece, we have, we do have, uh, staff already. Uh, we have internally, we have a network system, sort of a, our own TV network that runs through all our shops that announces opportunities to relocate in and in the country. Uh, so we get people that way as well. Uh, and then there's local recruiting from other, uh, as I mentioned before, vendor partners, OEM dealers that we know, uh, staff on tools, Mac tool, drivers that, uh, you just in the right direction to talk to somebody. And that's always a good reference.
Okay, so, so you don't have a crew ready to go as soon as we sign the tape. You got, you have one person right now and you've got a couple warm bodies that, that you think may, uh, how long is the ramp up? How long is the ramp up that we're giving? Because I know that we have ninety percent that we wanna get on the, uh, on, on the road as far as our, our vehicles are concerned. You know, what is the anticipated ramp up to, to getting this, this second ship staff?
Well, it's not just about staffing.
Correct.
When it comes to starting with these contracts, it involves our software system, it involves parts management. It's been involved partitioning off the parts room, but a fence system for us to have our own parts locked up. There aren't, there are now. There's, there's things that have to happen aside from hiring. Uh, typically, it's forty-five to sixty-eight to do this. Uh, because this is sort of, uh, then we're gonna attract the process as the RFP closed, uh, we have a very large project right in front of us right now, uh, in Cincinnati, Ohio, that, uh, is due to start in July one. So this is lining it up with that. So, uh, we can start most soon as July one here, uh, but I'm comfortable with July one. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other questions? Well, it's the public, my computer is dying, so if that work, you have to send me through the mail line from the public chair, come on the side. Okay, you in here? This is, uh, Chad, this is a solution to, I think, something that's been ailing us for a long time. And I think creativity was put in there. Um, everything I heard is nice. Very impressive to be able to move forward with Chris. Excellent job.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Second.
Much like Commissioner, who that said, you like Commissioner, Mardest, and full call, please.
Commissioner Gresik?
Yes.
Commissioner, who that?
Yes.
Commissioner, before that?
Yes.
Press me on Preston?
Yes.
Mayor Dan.
Yes.
We are now at comments by administration and legal.
Who'd like to go first?
Just one for tonight, uh, Mayor. Thank you. Just to update the commission on the vaccination site and incentive for active agent. We are targeting early next week, uh, as a start date that is pending, uh, vaccination, uh, vaccinations. So, um, the actual supply vaccinations. So we'll keep, uh, you and public posted on that as we move forward through the week.
Excellent.
I also have a comment, uh, tonight. For the last four months, probably since December, the county has been operating under the same, uh, emergency order with respect, respect to COVID nineteen restrictions. Uh, for the first time in four months, the county, uh, yesterday evening, did release a new, uh, updated emergency order. Um, and, you know, I have gone through that and made some preliminary notes, and I thought I would just briefly go through some of the, um, you know, big ticket changes, uh, for the benefit of the commission and any, uh, residents who may be watching tonight. Um, so, you know, probably one of the biggest, uh, changes is with respect to, uh, outdoor events and, and, and locations. So the restrictions have been removed, uh, on beaches, on public community pools and private club pools. And, and I'm not talking about face masks, I'm just talking about, you know, capacity limitations, things of that nature. Uh, pool decks, pools and other recreational amenities and housing developments previously, you know, the capacity was capped at fifty percent. Uh, that is no longer the case. Uh, golf courses, the restrictions are removed, removed boating and marine activities, uh, and, and also parks. Uh, additionally, uh, some of the more stringent sanitation requirements have generally been, uh, loosened up a bit, um, with respect to community, for, community rooms, uh, fitness centers and gyms and housing developments. You're now allowed to have your, your shower facilities opened. Um, you don't necessarily need to put out all the disaffecting wipes uh, in various places. The, uh, ten-person limitation for outdoor open-air events and activities uh, was removed so long as, uh, the attendees consistently practice social distancing or, uh, if the event is in organized, uh, sport. There was a reference in the prior order to curfews, um, in December. Also, uh, it was made clear that, that they're not enforcing the curfew with respect to restaurants and bars at this time, um, due to some pending litigation against the county. They also removed certain restrictions for after-school activities and have deferred to recommending compliance with, with CDC guidance. Uh, and then, you know, finally, I would point out that they also, uh, loosened up some of the restrictions with respect to vacation rentals. They were previously limited to, uh, six individuals, uh, per vacation rental. They loosened that up to ten, uh, which doesn't apply if, if you're members of the same household. Uh, with respect to establishments, right, restaurants, uh, and retail establishments, movie theaters, um, things of that nature. The fifty percent capacity limitation is still in there. However, now the county has added metrics uh, to dictate when those would be, uh, further loosened up as well. And it will generate, require a, um, fifty percent of the adults in Broward County to have received at least one vaccination shot as well as the, uh, COVID nineteen testing positivity rate, uh, going, uh, at five percent or below. So, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent I can. It is a seventy-two page, uh, emergency order. And, and, you know, I was addressing the major highlights with respect to some of the distinctions between what was adopted in December and what was, uh, passed last night.
Thank you. Madam, is there any questions from the other commissioners? Okay, that's it. I was to see if they had their hands up. Okay, thank you.
And if there are no questions, Mayor, you're now at comments by Mayor and City Commissioner.
Start with, uh, Mr. Ford.
So you all probably know that I am your representative to the Solid Waste Working Group in Broward County that is trying to come up with a alternative moving forward. And, and you've probably seen information in your packets and maybe from the Broward League of Cities and maybe from neighboring cities that are putting out information. And my objective tonight is not to go into detail and, on any of the particular alternatives, but rather to tell you, I will, at the next meeting in, in May. And tonight is basically to let you know that the, the issue, um, is very complex. It's thirty-plus years in the, in the making. The mayor is extremely familiar with the issues that we are discussing. Um, and so I just ask for the next meeting that you please come in prepared. The, um, Broward League has a great website that has the materials on it of not only the videos from the working group, but also there was a presentation recently, um, that I believe you all have that was given by County Commissioner Bee Furr, that he made to the working group, which factually, uh, lays out the three different alternatives that are being discussed. Which is, uh, a dependent district, uh, an independent district, and then inter-local agreement. Those are basically the three types of governing structures that are being contemplated. And the presentation given by County Commissioner Furr was very factual, and it laid out all three options and the pros and the cons to, to each. So that I, I think that would be a great resource for you all to look at. In addition, uh, there was a study done by a company called Arcadis. It's a, it's an extremely long report. Um, and even more so boring, uh, but they do make a recommendation, uh, in, in their report for governing structure going forward. Um, so I would just ask that you take a look at those going, um, forward, coming into our next meeting, so that what I tell you will have some, you'll be able to make some sense as to what I'm trying to convey to you. The, I will tell you, the working group has made a recommendation by six to three vote to go with an independent district, um, although there is a meeting this week that may possibly, um, give them in, more information to, you know, possibly reconsider that decision. We'll, we'll have to see what remains to be, to be seen. Um, so I just ask that you please come into the next meeting, having reviewed some of those materials, because I'm gonna go through the, the three options, um, and, and try and put some meat on, on the bones. Because the working group is looking for each of the cities to weigh in as to do they have a recommendation or does, does each city have a preferred alternative? And so as your representative, I need to go back to them with any of the comments that we as a, an entire body may, may have. So I just wanna tee it up tonight, that on, uh, the next meeting, which I believe is May four, I'll be going into more detail with you. So just please take a look at the, um, the backup materials and we can have a good discussion at our, at our next meeting. Uh, the second option or second item that I have, uh, I'm gonna steal somebody's thunder, but that's what happens when you go first, is, uh, I wanna congratulate DNA Labs for taking additional space here in the city of Deerfield Beach. They are one of the premier companies that we have in our city and we were all, um, I'm sure copied on the press release that they have expanded their headquarters here in Deerfield, by Deerfield Beach by an additional twenty-five thousand square feet. Um, so we always like to promote, uh, good news and, and our businesses here in the city of Deerfield Beach. I think that's a great example. And the last comment that I have tonight is that, uh, before the next meeting on Saturday, May first, I will have my next office hours. As always, you can contact me anytime. You don't have to wait till the first Saturday of the month. You can contact me anytime. But if you wanna have a Zoom or telephone meeting on a Saturday morning, uh, from ten to noon, you can reach out to me via the city manager's office um, to schedule that. And with that, I have nothing further. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, District three.
District three, um, I wanna thank the police department and our, our fearless leader, Captain Brimlow. Uh, they ran a blitz Wednesday night, I believe it was Wednesday night. The west part of Deerfield Beach included Green Road, Ten Street, uh, Military Trail, Power Line. They gave out a hu, over a hundred tickets in one night.
They also, when they pulled some people over, found illegal guns and drugs in some of the cars. Made some felony arrests as well. Um. I've been getting a lot of complaints about racing on these streets, especially late at night with cars that have been rigged. To make loud noise and annoy people at eleven, twelve o'clock at night, especially seniors who go to bed early. And I'm very happy the police department has stepped in to curb it. With the, with this particular blitz operation, and I hope it continues. Um, I hope they take each part of the city and, and do the same. Because traffic uh, speeding and not following signs. Uh, last month, we had a bicyclist killed on Green Road. And it hurts me a, as the commissioner, to have to deal with families. When people are killed due to carelessness and road rage and things like that. So I thank our local police department for their answering the cry of, of, of citizens in, in my district. I will be having a District Three meeting at the end of May on the twenty-fourth. And uh, proper uh, announcements will go out. It'll be one o'clock in the afternoon. Um. It'll be a Zoom meeting. Other than that, uh. Spring is here, hurricane season is coming, and I advise all of our constituents, don't wait for the last minute. Think ahead, it's hurricane season. Don't wait for the stores to have nothing left on the shelf. Begin little by little to stock up now, so that if a tragedy does occur. You're not left out in the cold. You have the water and the food that you need to survive. That's, that's it from District Three.
Thank you, sir. Uh, District Two, Vice President.
Thank you, Mayor. District Two comments, uh, just want to advise everyone, especially my colleagues. That the Pico rattler administration is going really well. Um, you know, I spent some time over, over uh, administration on Saturday. And, and again, I think my colleagues, the first several families that absence of having the Pico rattler. Organization intact, I just don't know what the kids will be doing on that. I saw some situations where I just sit myself quietly. And that's something I definitely, on these teams in the right direction, um, you know, good leadership. I even had the uh, um, the honor of, you know, signing the kid up on the condition. Um, that his grades uh, improved and he in agreement with me, I went on to it. Um, so I signed him up. Um, would advise everyone that the June team planning is going well. However, I want everyone to be aware that COVID nineteen uh, is still a factor in terms of how. Uh, successfully we plan. So it is, it is a challenge. Uh, but the overall planning is going well. Um. There is an African-American Heritage Board meeting tomorrow at six thirty PM. That will be held right here at City Hall. Um, and all, all of welcome to attend. And um, on the, on Thursday at seven o'clock. Um, there will be U L I Study Workshop. That's the Urban League Institute Workshop. Where they will be talking about the central city uh, area. Uh, talking about uh, identifying, you know, the challenges that it has and recommendations that will come. To be able to vital, uh, vitalize the area and to, you know, get it to where it needs to be. So that's going to take place. Um, a couple of days from now, on Thursday, seven PM, we will uh, yeah. Everyone, please, wear a mask. Everyone, please, wear a mask. Um. I want to uh, also say that uh, in the Southwest, Forest Terrace and Southwest Third. Uh, street uh, area, I have received a lot of publicity of calls all the time. People are making sleep, uh, all kind of challenges going on. I have relayed those, uh, those concerns. Uh, to BSO, and I will tell you that a lot of the challenges. That so many of the residents were experiencing has gone down. In fact, I got a call today. Um, thanking um, uh, myself and BSO, it's really not me. It's uh, BSO to give them some relief in that area. And uh, so I'm very, very happy about that. Um. And the last thing that uh, I would say that uh, related to the presentation that was given to us. Uh, uh, vector weight management. I would tell you that the answer, one of the, you may not be told, but one of the answers, reaching out to high school. Reaching out to the high schools, making contact with them. They have no idea about what we're talking about tonight. And who knows, there could be lots of multiple candidates uh, that are there. That uh, could be trained and that could be steering in the right direction and be extended tremendous opportunity. But until that is done in a, in a way where it is a part of a plan, a plan to expand. Then it won't go anywhere. Um, so I am a proponent of uh, of reaching out to our local high school. And see how we can partner with them to actually uh, uh, take care of some of the challenges. That we experience for it, that we do the, and might do the uh, uh, other candidates, uh, as they go.
And that's it, President. Thank you, sir. District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and, and thank you for um, the comments from our previous colleagues. Because uh, they, they instill a lot of that thunder, which is, is wonderful. We're all at least like-minded. Uh, with regards to uh, thanking BSO for um, stepping up to the plate. And, 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 and making sure that we do these places. Because you know, individual driving has, has gone downhill in the last twenty years. I sound like my father or my grandfather, I know, but it, it's definitely true. Um, and you know, the police cannot be everywhere all the time. Uh, but uh, I'm sure these two and three hundred dollar tickets do hurt, uh, even though the city does not benefit. Uh, from these uh, tickets, it's the state. Uh, our residents hopefully do. Uh, so uh, I, I do appreciate, uh, you know, BSO stepping up to the plate. And uh, making sure that um, we're policing our roads properly. I've had some complaints about, you know, dogs in Sullivan Park and, and dogs on the beaches. And again, the, the police cannot be everywhere, um, but they are stepping up to the plate and making sure. That when they do find offenders, that they are approaching them and taking the necessary means. Uh, to educate them, uh, where pets are allowed and where they are not allowed. Uh, we have a big challenge in District Four with regards to Airbnbs. Uh, they seem to be popping up more and more. Uh, and I know that um, we're doing everything that we can as a city. Uh, to, you know, register these properties. Uh, please, if uh, as, as residents, uh, if you find violators, uh, please reach out to code enforcement. Please reach out to BSO. Uh, that's the only way we're going to try and. And, and at least supplement this as, as much as we possibly can. Um, the last thing I want to mention is to the developer over uh, Eller and Federal Highway. I continually receive uh, messages from residents uh, who are concerned about this property. Uh, and I do ask that uh, the developer, please continue to reach out to the residents over there. Some of those residents have been there fifty and sixty years, uh, and they're well aware of the history. Um, uh, of that neighborhood and the challenges um, that are faced with regards to traffic. So I uh, appeal to the developer, uh, and the developers represented, uh, to continue to reach out to that neighborhood. Uh, and uh, do what uh, you said that you would do with regards to communicating with the community. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um. One of the things that we brought up tonight uh, during our meeting was, you know, we have uh, BSO activity. More than being served, the different actions that we're taking. Um, certainly, there's multiple sides to every story. And we take all of it seriously. We have a book that, um, certainly not something taken lightly, unfortunately. And I'm very appreciative of the fact that our Sheriff's Office has body cams on. And you know, when you look at that compared to what people might film or uh, some, the, the truth is in there somewhere. So I, I hope, you know, we take it seriously. We want to look at, um. And uh, I'm appreciative of our chief and our XO who, um. Have no problem reaching out, trying to solve some of these issues and look into it, take it seriously. So I'm very appreciative of the hard work they're doing on that. And uh, they've done an outstanding job apparently with, with this increased enforcement. Um, they do an outstanding job all the time, really an outstanding job here lately, what they've been doing. Um, and I, I really don't like it based on some conversations I've had last week with individuals. We try to group situations that are happening, not even in the city, but not even the county. Or even in the state, particularly other areas, and trying to drop that into what's happening here in Deerfield Beach. I know that's not the case. I'm appreciative of the fact that we have leadership we do. Who will look into it should there ever be the circumstance in which uh, people are stepping outside the lines. When they're supposed to be doing what comes along, of course. Um, one of the things that's a little bit concerning now, unfortunately, we have Broward County doing your typical. Uh, let's put in an emergency order out, giving us heads up on it. Uh, that's always frustrating, but with that out there. Um, one of the things in the metrics that the city attorney brought up is the fifty percent capacity for restaurants and bars. That will change depending on how many people we have vaccinated in the county. Palm Beach County announced today that three of their vaccination sites, they're closing. Because as, as it's been opened up to, you know, people, they don't have the same interest in being vaccinated. As uh, the people in uh, that are older. So we're seeing that the vaccinations numbers are going down. That's disappointing. Um, let's hope that people do their homework, look into it and get themselves vaccinated. Um, you know, there's a lot of conspiracy theories, a lot of people have their own thought process on it. I can tell you as someone who, I think all of us are of that age, that, you know, I, I can't remember any of us contracting polio. Kind of matter, that, you know, I think most of us at this age have a big scar on our shoulders from the vaccination policies you see. Um, considering all the other things that are in other products that are out there, I think we're doing okay. But you know, obviously, there are some circumstances where people can't get vaccinated yet. Respect that and understand it. But I hope people take it seriously and, and do the research and get vaccinated, so we can move forward. Pass the space we've been going through here now for year nine. Um. You, that's everything I have. Yeah, I apologize for my computer, I think it's out of range. With that, I would be promoting to the chair.
Motion to go with Jared.
Thank you. All favors said aye.
Aye. Aye. You made four.
Aggressive with that motion.